Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, October 16th, 2018. I am calling the meeting to order and will ask for roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Dorman?
Here.
Councilmember Moller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Doren Becker?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is our motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Onto proclamations. The first one we have is to recognize one of our outgoing commissioners from our Yountville Arts Commission. I'll invite Dee Heizer, please join me at the podium.
I'm not sure who the lone chair is supposed to be.
Oh.
Okay.
For the wine.
So this is a certificate of appreciation in recognition of Dee Heizer, Yountville Arts Commission. The Town Council and staff express a sincere thank you for your contributions and service to the town of Yountville as a member of the Yountville Arts Commission from July 2016 to July 2018.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And?
Oh, wow.
To celebrate?
What will I ever do with that?
You'll figure it out. Would you like to share any thoughts?
Oh, no. Just thank you for everything, the opportunity, and I love this town. I'm going nowhere. I'll be out there volunteering everywhere. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Dee.
Thank you, Dee.
And I know our next recipients of a proclamation might think, oh, we're going to get some wine here. No, you're not getting any wine. You can join one of our local commissions, though, and then you might have a shot at it. But I do want to recognize on behalf of the council, the 20th anniversary, Chef Thomas Keller and his entire Thomas Keller Restaurant Group staff and the team at Bouchon are just celebrated on Sunday, October 14th, for 20 years of service here in Yountville. So I'd like to invite Chefs David Hotson and Ross Melling to please join me up here at the podium so they can receive this proclamation on behalf of TKRG. Chef? Will you be in here? Thank you, Chef. I'll just get over here toward the microphone. This is a proclamation recognizing the 20th anniversary of Bouchon Bistro in Yountville. Whereas on October 14th, 1998, four years after his successful debut in Napa Valley with the French Laundry, Chef Thomas Keller opened Bouchon, offering authentic French bistro cuisine, a raw bar, and an extensive wine selection with Chef Keller's signature attention to detail in ingredients, presentation, and service. Whereas the restaurant located at 6534 Washington Street features a French zinc bar, mosaic floor, antique light fixtures, an expansive hand-painted mural, and provides outdoor dining on the patio and courtyard where patrons can enjoy picturesque views of Yountville and the western hills of Napa Valley. Whereas Bouchon consistently has received awards and accolades from the culinary world, international press, and the general public, highlighted by a one-star rating from the prestigious Michelin Guide, as well as many other regional, national, and international publications. Whereas Yountville is a premier destination for visitors from around the world that balances the charm and community spirit of a small town with unparalleled dining and award-winning wine. Bouchon is one of the highly acclaimed restaurants that has resulted in Yountville being referred to as the culinary capital of Napa Valley. Now therefore be it resolved that I, John F. Dunbar, Mayor, on behalf of the Town Council and entire Yountville community, do recognize Bouchon as one of our premier establishments in town, and we congratulate, congratulate Chef Thomas Keller and his team for providing 20 years of outstanding restaurant service and community participation in Yountville. Thank you very much. I think we may just pose a little bit for the camera. You've got to shift that. Thank you. If you'd like to share any thoughts?
Of course. Unfortunately, Chef Keller can't be here tonight, but he sends his, um, thank you for this proclamation, and we're grateful to the community of Yountville, our guest partners and culinary service teams, and you, the town of Yountville, for your support over these past 20 years and hopefully for the next 20, 40, 60 years. Together we have made Bouchon what it is today at 20 years old. We're very proud of that. Chef has shared Bouchon represents a group of people who have worked to support a vision that helped establish a very special place in the heart of Napa Valley. We imported a bit of Paris to Yountville and revised French classics in a warm and welcoming bistro setting. At the zinc bar, friendships have been forged among guests visiting from all around the world, and our team continues to build relationships with local and new guests each and every day. We have served over half a million chocolate Bouchons, a quarter of a million steak frits and onion soups, and Samurriettes, bib salads, roast chicken, lemon tartans, and they've left the menu, and we can go on and on and on. Guests leave so satisfied they turn to the Bouchon cookbook to make our recipes at home. What started as a way to nourish the French Laundry team in the town has now reached a tremendous milestone of two decades, and we look forward to the future behold. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chef. Appreciate it very much. Really, you really personify what we do at a very high level of excellence in service here in Yountville, so thank you all very much. Please share it with the rest of the team. Okay, we'll move on to public comment. I know we do have a special guest with us tonight to speak to an issue that is on a lot of folks' minds. Thank you. So I invite Mark Van Gorder to come on up as soon as the aisle is clear.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you very much. That was so unfair. I am not allowed to go to Bouchon without my wife, and she's not here, so that's not happening for me tonight, but certainly enticing. So I would like to first thank City Manager Rogers for, A, asking for the information about what we're here to talk about tonight briefly, which is the public safety power shut-off. That's what we call it. It's P S, P S for short. And I made a similar presentation this morning at the Board of Supervisors for an update and thought, well, you know, while it's fresh in my mind, perhaps I would just come on up and do the same thing here. So what I'd like to do is go over this fairly briefly. If you have questions, I can answer some of them shortly here. If you ever want to, you know, put something on the agenda for a deeper dive or meet individually, we can do that. But effectively, there's three key components to, again, we call it the public safety power shut-off. And one is monitoring, two is informing, three is, of course, the shut-off, and then after the power shut-off and the restoration. And the main point of shutting down power proactively is to make sure that we don't have electric lines that could be damaged by falling trees, falling branches, or depending on the strength of the wind, other things that may fly through the air that could, could cause damage to our equipment and possibly ignite something. So the whole idea is to shut it down for that reason. The good news, and I'll keep this extra brief for Yountville, is Yountville really isn't in an area that should be impacted by, by a power shut-off. So one might ask the question, why do you need a presentation? I think it's helpful for you to know that this goes on. You may have residents that ask the question, should it happen in the future? Does it impact us? What are they doing? Why is it happening? And you may have some surrounding areas just going up the sides of the valley that do get impacted by it, and that may have some impact on your town in the future. But let me, again, I'll go through this. I hope not too fast. Slow me, stop me with questions if you need to. But PG&E has 24-hour staffing at our, what we call our wildfire safety operations center at our main office in San Francisco. So during fire season, which now is, is growing, some might argue throughout the year, but as far, as long as it's deemed fire season, we have special people monitoring it. And those people are meteorologists. They, well, I'll just, I'll just read some of this to you. I haven't, I haven't got it all down, memorized yet. But they have real-time monitoring of the conditions from on-the-ground field teams, so people that are just out, actually out in Napa in various areas. We have multiple weather stations, and we're installing more, real-time video feeds, emergency alert systems. We work with CAL FIRE, National Weather Service, NOAA. We even work with Caltrans and the Bay Area Air Quality Management, folks. Everybody pulling data, everybody sharing information, monitoring things very closely to make a very significant decision. Do we shut off the power to a population? And so that's, that's the monitoring part. The criteria, which most people want to know is, all right, fine, you're monitoring it, but what is it that finally makes you make the decision? It's based on a number of factors, and those are extreme fire danger threat level, and that's classified by the National Fire Danger Rating System. I won't redo the details. Red flag warning, I'm sure you've heard the past few days that we were under a National Weather Service red, red flag warning, which I believe now is passed. Low humidity levels, below 20 percent. Sustained winds of 25 miles per hour or expected gusts of 45 miles per hour. We had recorded wind speeds over Mount Senilina on Sunday night of 75 miles per hour. So for those of you that are into hurricane speeds, that's about a category one hurricane speed there. And then gusts of 50-plus miles per hour recorded down along the ridge of the Vacas. Again, I mentioned the site-specific conditions, so where we have field teams out monitoring the situation, they're reporting that back. Critically dry vegetation. I think we're all aware that that, that there is a lot of what firefighters call fuel in our valley here. So those are some of the criteria. The next question is, where do we turn the power off? If not here in Yountville or in the city of Napa, how do we determine where the power gets shut off? California Public Utilities Commission, working with CAL FIRE, other utilities, communications utilities, AT&amp;T, Verizon, and others that have facilities in what they've determined to be, you know, high-fuel, high-risk rural areas, have created what they call the High-Fire Threat District map. Again, it's a CPUC-designated and created map based on the utilities. So sometimes you'll have some folks say, wait, that's not a high-fire-threat district according to maybe Napa County Fire Department. They may have a different-looking map, so that if you overlaid them, they may be slightly different. These are based on utility lines. And so there's, there's different tiers, but in these tier-three high-threat areas where they think is most likely that there could be potential ignition, those are the circuits. That's where the power at our substations get, get shut down. And depending on where the lines run, it may impact areas like, like it did in Napa for Calistoga, for Angwin, Deer Park, from Bothay Park, just because of the way the lines run from Bothay Park across the valley over to Dutch Henry Canyon, Lowell Mall Road, that area. So that's, that's how the areas are determined. Probably the most important question that I get asked is, what do you do about public notification? How do you notify the public? So when we are looking at these conditions arise, and sometimes we don't get a whole lot of notice, we make a determination as best we can 24 hours in advance, hopefully more, but we decided on Saturday morning at 11 o'clock to issue a notice that we thought that this was going to happen. So we send a notice out via text, email, and phone, depending on how customers prefer to be contacted and how they've updated their contact information. We strongly encourage customers, and I'll provide this to you, Steve, or, you know, if the city would like to republish or remind folks here, we'd really like them to update their, their contact information for power outages, and that may be helpful during the winter season as well. We send out a notice. First people we talk to is county or city or town officials, operational emergency services, folks like that, and we let them know. Then we do the public notifications that it may happen. Two to three hours before we think the power may be shut off, we have another notification, same thing. People have asked, what about critical care customers, electric equipment for medical needs? If we do not get a response from our email, phone, or text messaging where the person can respond, yes, push one, let us know that they received that message for those customers, we will send one of our employees to knock on their door to make sure that they are getting the message about what's about to happen for the power shut-off. We also use social media, website, radio, television news, et cetera. So that's the notice. And the last part of it, power gets shut off. It was shut off at approximately 8:05 Sunday night to about 6,000 people. By 8 o'clock Monday night, 4,000 people had been restored. It was challenging, as you've probably heard, and a significant inconvenience for a number of people, especially for those folks who had to go from about 8 o'clock on Monday night into today at 6 o'clock, we'd restored all customers. So almost 48 hours, 24 hours for 4,000 people, almost 48 hours for 2,000 people. So that is my summary. I'm sure that wasn't as quick as I had said I would make it, but, you know, again, that's what a public, public safety power shut-off is. I'm happy to send our policies and procedures document. It's, it's about five pages. And can answer any questions, and I'm happy to come back to talk about any other questions you may have related to our California, our community wildfire safety plan.
Thank you, and I appreciate you coming up here, even though Yountville specifically wasn't part of the noticed shot, potential power shutdowns. We have residents that are working in the areas that were affected and vice versa, people coming from those areas maybe not hearing whether conditions were normal or not here in Yountville. So we wanted to make sure that we were informed along with everyone else. We also have our subcommittee members that are working on emergency preparedness for our residents specific to Yountville, and so it's a very timely topic that's being discussed in a lot of our neighborhoods. So we all heard about it, and we wanted to hear a little bit more in case we are a part of the next incident that happens. So it's unlikely, I realize, because we aren't in some of those mapped-out areas that are the highest fire threats, but we're all a little bit sensitive to it, so.
Yeah, and I think, you know, a couple of things, as you mentioned, while Yountville may be the culinary capital of, of Napa, we're all one big community. Well, you know, we have people that work in different areas, live here, go other places. We have many guests and tourists who are visiting, you know, so they're traveling out to go other places. So the information sharing, working together, you know, communicating, coordinating, collaborating, all of that. And then as we head into, which I hope is a really drenching rainy season, we may likely have some power outages and how, and telling people to update their contact information and have, be prepared for 24 hours of outage. If CAL FIRE were to ever ask us to shut down our power for whatever reason, there will be no notice. When CAL FIRE says shut the power off, we shut, that's it. So, so there are various things, cars into tele, to power line poles. Those sort of things will happen, and that won't get noticed either, but I will always have phone numbers to call if and when it happens, and we'll try and keep it to a minimum.
Yeah, thank you. Questions from the council? I know we're not really into a, this is a more public comment, but any questions for more information?
Well, thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the short notice, ironic, short notice response from PG&E.
Well, I appreciate it. I'm going to get in my car and do everything I can to, to go past Bouchon without stopping by.
They take, you can order to-go food. Don't worry about it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. Any other members here like to speak during public comment? Seeing no others, we'll move on to our consent calendar. We have two items. Thank you, Dee.
Thank you, Dee.
Thank you for your service. Two consent calendar items before us. Is there action on those items? As in, is there a motion?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That passes unanimously. Thank you. We're going to skip down from our presentations. We have none. Public hearings are none. Administrative regular item, I think this is the first of a triple header with our Public Works Director, Joe Tagliabashi, Yount Street Water Line Replacement Project. Joe?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Dunbar, members of the council. Tonight, we have for your consideration, adoption of a resolution to approve our plans and specs to authorize staff to solicit bids for the construction of the Yount Street Water Line Replacement Project. So this project runs about 1,300 lineal feet. This is a map of the project limits. It's going to run basically from about the driveway of the Bardessono Inn, heading north and terminating at the new water line that was placed about four, almost five years ago now at Mount Street. So a pretty straightforward project in terms of the water line replacement and something that we have done basically in tandem with the paving program that we are developing and that will come to you sometime in December with, using Measure T funds. So a little bit about this project. Total project is $430,000 budgeted. We anticipate the project after bidding and the award and all the other details that we need to go through with the contractor. Project should start in late January, very early February. Should take about four to six weeks to complete, depending on the weather. We are in the rainy period. The good news with a project like this is even though it may be in a rainy period, as long as it's not raining, they should be able to work because the pavement allows them to work on a stable surface that would be relatively dry, and the dirt, once they start digging through it, will be relatively dry as well. Engineer's estimate is $395,900, so we do have a little bit of room left in the budget for contingency. As I said earlier, it's about 1,300 lineal feet of eight-inch main. We're going to be replacing a pipe that is close to 40 years old. It's an eight-inch ACP. ACP is a S, S asbestos cement pipe. That was, was typically used back in the 60s and 70s as a replacement for some of the steel pipe that was used before that. We will not be removing that pipe from the ground. We will be relieving, leaving it in place, has been our past practice. And the reason why we are doing this, even though there are some, a few years left on the service life of this pipe, is because the roadway that we will be replacing on top of Yount Street is expected to last 25 years or more. So given that this road is going to, the new road's going to last at least 25 years, we want a pipeline that's going to be kind of existing at least as long as that, and possibly the service life will last long into the next service life of that road. The new water line is C-900. That is a HDP-E, a plastic product. Again, that's the standard in the industry. It's very durable. It's resilient. It survives a variety of conditions underground rather well. We're also going to replace two new hy, place two new hydrants and the valves for those hydrants and all the laterals along that run. I think there's, on the neighborhood of 12 to 15 laterals that we will replace as well. And then we also are planning to provide an additional conduit to, to start to be able to establish a network of conduits so that in future years, we'll be able to use that for an information highway. So should we need connectivity between other buildings and other municipalities, those conduits become a valuable commodity because other technic, tech, tech companies tend to want to rent those, that space out so they can run their cables or fiber, so it becomes a kind of an enterprise fund on its own. And even if we aren't able to use it that way, the town will be able to use it to run cables and conduits for us without tearing up the street again. So again, that's become standard practice in the industry and throughout many agencies as the need for connectivity in all of our buildings and around town become more of a necessity. It's just a smart way to do it, since you have a ditch open already. Why not throw a couple of pipes in and put some boxes in so that we have some connectivity and we can begin to start that network and start connecting places that we need to get connected to. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Questions from the council? I do have a couple related to timing with the school. How are we coordinating with school hours, getting, you know, access to and from?
Sure.
And I'll, I'll combine my second question, which is neighbor access, and how are we noticing neighbors? And are we doing this in sections so that certain blocks are impacted at different times?
We will do it in the same method that we did in Yountville Cross Road or on the other portion of Yount. We're, we're going to work with the contractor to try to make sure that we can get the work done with as little disruption as possible. Having said that, when you're reconstructing a road, there is a little bit of delay in some cases. They won't start until 9 o'clock, so the morning school session will be underway, avoiding most of that traffic. And they're very good at getting traffic in and out of businesses and schools without much delay. So typically, we don't allow more than 10 minutes, and that's what we're going to try to stick to. So there could be some short delay. The specs call for the homes and neighbors to have access to their homes, so that same delay could be part of their day. We're going to practice our normal, good communication standards. In addition, part of the spec requires the contractor to put door hangers on, notify the neighbors, and we've had pretty good success with that system, so we don't expect anything less.
And realizing the reality is that there are employees that park on Yount Street. We're reaching out to businesses that we know have employees that use that area as well, I presume?
We will, yeah. And hopefully it'll help change some of the behaviors. There's, you know, good parking in other parts of town, especially down in my end of town. They don't often use that piece of Finell, so maybe it'll give people an opportunity to see that there's much more better parking spots and not that far away, so maybe it'll help change some behaviors as well.
Yeah, thank you. Any members of the public seeing none out there? I'll assume that there aren't any questions from them. Any last chance for questions from council? If there are none, is there a motion on this item? Who would like to try that? Anyone? Anyone?
So I will move adoption of resolution number 18-3517, approving plans and specifications and authorizing solicitation of bids for the construction of the Yount Street Water Line Replacement Project, number WA-0010.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The first of our staff informational reports is next. Traffic control devices and signs within the town. Joe?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So this update was, was driven mainly by some questions that we had from some of the residents around town, but also just discussions that staff has had in realizing that it'd been a while since we had had a discussion about traffic control devices. And while we are familiar with how they're installed and why they're installed, sometimes it's a bit like trying to read a foreign language for those of us who aren't in that group of people. So we'll take you through a short trip and hopefully be able to explain why and how we install these devices and what's driven, what drives some of the installation of some of our signs and markings. So the big manual, the regulatory environment that we are forced to or required to conform to is the California Manual Traffic Control Device, also known as California Muti. So that helps, the main part of Muti is to help provide a system of consistency and uniform, uniformity so that people who are traveling through any town in America, really, expect the same kind of signage and the same types of traffic control devices in the same situations. It helps people avoid crashes. It helps traffic move a little quicker, and it helps us enforce the rules of the road just a little bit better. So in our terms, uniformity means treating similar situations in similar ways. Categories of signs and markings. So there are three basic categories, regulatory, usually black and white, or in stop sign, in this case of a stop sign, red and white. They give notice of traffic laws or regulations, so not a lot of leeway in placing these signs. It's, this is the most heavily regulated part of the manual for us. So there are three basic categories. Regulatory, usually black and white or in stop sign, in this case of a stop sign, red and white. They give notice of traffic laws or regulations, so not a lot of leeway in placing these signs. It's, this is the most heavily regulated part of the manual for us and it's very specific on sign placement when it comes to regulatory signs. Warning, yellow and black. So, they give notice of the situations that might not readily be apparent. So, a turn that's coming up that might be especially sharp, most of us know, might be familiar with an off ramp that you get off of where you're coming down at a higher speed and need to slow down because the turn is both cambered and sharp. Or just warning people that around the school that there could be children present, that kind of marking is typical for a warning sign, yellow and black mostly. Guide signs, they can be green, blue, brown and white. So these are your signs that you see for gas stations, restaurants, marking parks or those types of facilities. They give us the directions to destinations, directions, distances, services, points of interest, recreational facilities, cultural information, all those things fall under the guide sign category. And then, the last of the signs and markings are the curb or legend. So you'll see red for no parking, no stopping, yellow, white, green, blue. All of those have very specific meanings and they come along with very specific ticketable offenses if they are signed correctly, along with the markings that support the signs that are on the side of the road. So the authority to install. The authority to install these signs is given to us in our municipal code, mostly under ten sixteen dash oh-one-oh. Gives us a determination of who can install and why they should have been, be installed. Basically, talking to us about using Muti or by ordinance or resolution of the council. Signs re-erected on a through street. This is specifically about the stop signs that we have been erecting. So the second paragraph really talks about the through streets that don't get stop signs and the streets that intersect them are required to have stop signs. So we had several locations in town that didn't meet this ordinance requirement. So, based on our increased risk, the litigation that we have seen coming through on occasion on these, this type of specific example, we thought it prudent to go ahead and erect the signs. It's a rather inexpensive way and usually non-controversial way to comply with the regulatory environment and help kind of reduce our risk. There were a few questions about why we place those stop signs and as you can see, it's pretty clear from this ordinance on where we can and where we cannot place them. I will say that placing stop signs is another, as I said earlier, is one of those, one of those tasks that California Muti is very specific on. So you can't use it to, to control speed, to, you can't put up a stop sign to control speed. You cannot throw up a stop sign on a through street without a warrant. So that would mean we would have to do an engineering study. We would have to find conditions that warrant that stop sign such as accidents, wrecks, incidents, some condition that causes an unsafe condition that a stop sign would help remedy. And then we would have to bring that to you all and you would have to find that there was enough evidence for that warrant to, to authorize us to install the stop sign. So, stop signs are very important, but also as important for installing them and there's equal importance to make sure that you install them where they're needed and not where they're not needed. The sign installation process. So several methods, as we talked about earlier, drive our installation process. It can come from a law enforcement request. So, we have several devices out on Washington at the crosswalks that let people know that stop sign or stopping is required for pedestrians. I know that sounds like it should be just common knowledge, but you'd be surprised at the people who just kind of blow through a stop sign or don't allow pedestrians who are waiting at the intersections to cross through. So, we installed those particular devices on Washington because the law enforcement had recognized that some people are just blowing through them and we had also noticed that in several occasions. And they, in some cases, have helped. So, that's one instance where a traffic device seems to have helped a little bit, at least bring awareness to the, to the situation. Citizen requests. So in the case, in the case where somebody may notice something that we have, may not have noticed, a citizen may say, "We need a red curb." So that one of that, that picture on your right-hand side is a red curb in front of a hydrant. Well, there was a citizen who had noticed people parking in front of the hydrant or nearby the hydrant and we didn't have a red curb there. Most people recognize that you can't park near a hydrant. In this particular location, that wasn't the case, so we went out and painted a red curb for the citizen based on that request. And it's also allowed under our municipal code and under California Muti. Warrants are, that are driven by accidents or incidents, as we talked about earlier. So if there's a warrant that we bring forward to you all and you recognize that the evidence presented autho, is enough to install a traffic control device, then that is a method for us to install a sign. The other one, it would be trending litigation. So, if we see or hear about or are aware of trending litigation as it occurs to signs or markings, that could also drive us to then start the warrant process, bring that forward to you all so that you can let us know if you recognize that warrant as being accurate and requiring the sign or not at this time. So, those are the basic conditions for sign installation. That is the basic sign and marking installation process that we go through when we install signs here in town. I will say that we also recognize that there are quite a few signs in town, so we're always on the lookout to try to reduce the signage, install signs on poles. Little streetlights are a good spot for us where that lends itself, where they lend themselves to that occasion. But we're always looking to try to consolidate signs, reduce signs or remove signs when possible. However, based on this presentation, you hopefully recognize that there are times when signs are required and unfortunately, we need them there and it's not, we just don't have the luxury of removing them. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on signs and markings.
Thank you, Joe. Thanks for the explanation, also displaying how we have pretty strong citizen, you know, participation and also staff response to those comments. So thank you for that.
Sure.
Any questions about the report? Thank you very much, Joe. Let's get to the third of three from Joe. Geographic Information System Update.
Okay, I'm going to have some help on this one. Jacob Solis, our, let me figure out what I'm doing here. It was working so good, Michelle.
Oh, just a second. There it goes, I see it.
That's what the problem is, trying to see a white arrow on a white background.
All right.
Okay, you turn this on, Jacob. Oh, right down here.
We're just adding the suspense for all the folks watching at home.
All right.
I know it's the GIS portion of the meeting.
Okay, so you can talk into this microphone right here. Okay, so Jacob is our engineering aide. This is his first presentation, I believe, with us?
I think so. I don't think I've had, talked in front of you before.
All right, well, he's, he's ready to go. So here we go. Jacob, it's all yours.
Steal the clicker?
No, I'll take it.
Oh, okay.
He's not giving, wow, he's not giving you total control at all. We shamed him into it.
Don't take much.
Everyone thinks of mapping as just a location on a piece of paper. What GIS does is it gives us that location, but it also adds, allows us to add data and information to that point, making it more interactive. This allows us to see patterns on where things are happening, if it's constantly happening in the same location, so that way we can see if there's an underlying issue or maybe that asset needs to be completely replaced. This allows us to see what the public is worried about and concerned about and also allows us to check on our maintenance and repair of our assets throughout town. Oh, it disappeared.
Want to go back?
One more time, it's a flying.
Oh.
Oh, fancy.
Okay. One of the strengths, one of the strengths of GIS is it allows us to bring in multiple layers into a single map, making customizable maps. So that way, what we need to see, where we need to see it, when we need to see it, can be shared with exactly who needs to see it quickly and efficiently. Making every map better for whoever needs to see it, customized and viewed whoever needs to see it. We have a map tracking what street signs we have replaced, when, so that way we know which ones have been replaced and which ones still need to be replaced. When a new one is put in, we have a picture attached to it showing the new sign. We have a date of when it was installed, starting our twelve-year warranty, so that way if something happens to the sign, we know whether or not it falls under warranty or if we have to completely fit the bill. It'll also show other data, what direction it's pointed at, what kind of reflectivity it has, all kinds of other information that may be pertinent to that map that someone may or may not need to see. Every year, we have storm drain inspection and cleanings. At the beginning of the season, I'll mark all the map as red. None of them have been checked. As the crews go out and check individual drainage inlets, they'll mark them as green showing that this one has been inspected and cleaned. This will stop them from having to go over the same inlet over and over and over, thinking that no one's done it before, or even accidentally skipping an entire section, thinking that someone else has done it. This also allows the supervisors to pull up the map and look at it and see, "Oh, we've only done half the town and it's going to start raining soon. We need to get out there and do it right now." And so it helps keep us making the town run more efficiently than it was before. What makes GIS special isn't, another click. What makes GIS special isn't the point, it's the data information we're allowed to attach to that point. This saves us in the end, time and money of going out and repeating items that we didn't need to repeat or missing items until it becomes such an issue that it's now a bigger deal. The people who use the data view it to add to it, who constantly create maps, update them, change them, we're all working together, making these live maps, this live data that we're constantly updating, constantly making better, more accurate than it was before. This allows the staff to work more efficiently and better use our time and it also gives the public a better product in the end.
So, we talked a little bit about the tools in, in our GIS toolkit. So now we're going to talk about some of the fun stuff that the public also gets to see. Most of that stuff that we talked about earlier was an internal map system layer and this, the rest of the presentation will be more about what is public facing, as they say in the GIS world. So, the MyVille app is something that's been around for a few years now. We would love to be able to show a more interactive piece of this technology. It, unfortunately, it's made for a smart device and it, it just doesn't show well in a presentation like this. But the MyVille app continues to get updated. You can go on to either the Droid Store or the Apple Store, download the app for free and all of the stuff that we're going to talk about in this app is included in, in this really nifty little package. So, you get a news feed that feeds directly from the town website, updates that are important to people who live in town, events that are happening, maybe there's an emergency that's going on. So all those kinds of things come across our news feed. Now they're, it's fed into the MyVille app in the latest version and updated along with the website. Report-it two-point-O is now available. So, we're all familiar with the report or could be familiar with the Report-it feature. It also is a pretty nice little tool. You basically use the camera in your phone. If you don't want to provide any contact information, you don't have to. You can really take a picture of an issue, a tree limb, a trip and fall, something that you see in town that you would like us to look at a little bit more and see if there's something going on with it. You take the picture, you hit send, it gets into the workflow, gets out to the Public Works Department and we're instantly notified that we have a, a report coming in from Report-it so we can go out. It marks the spot without anybody having to put an address in. It's, it's, it makes it really easy for us to get things that people find out in town that we may not see in a really efficient and effective way. Address search. So if you're new in town and you don't really know what kinds of services are around, you can punch in your address. It'll tell you when your garbage service is, what day street sweeping is. It'll give you contacts to Comcast, PG&E, all of those kinds of services that people need to help make their house a home here in town. The school district, it'll give information about the school district. There's a variety of information on that address search. It has an explore tab that helps people be able to follow our historic tour. So that piece is actually audio as well as visual. It'll give people a little bit of a primer on what's, what historic building or piece of art might, might be in front of them. There's some points of interest. Business, the Chamber of Commerce has a tab that gives visitors and residents access to restaurant information, hotel information, direct contact to those businesses. The public art walks on there. We have a variety of maps. So the AED, all of our AEDs are listed on that map. Mutt mitts, EV stations, the public restrooms, transit stops. Our town pass system is listed on there. So if you can map it in this town, it's on MyVille. It's really a nice little tool. We can't say enough about how useful it is and we really try to urge people to go out, download it and begin using it because they'll find out how useful it is and they're always surprised at how easy it is to navigate around on that tool. So now we're going to take you on to our website. So this is, anyone who has access to our website can go to the GIS tab. So it's in the Departments and Services, GIS and Planning and Building has a tab in there. So, they have some, a variety, as you can see, variety, it's not showing.
Oh, no.
Oh, maybe have you minimized the presentation?
No.
There you go.
It sho, it didn't show up.
Minimize the presentation? Or?
I'm going to do it this way. Can I get on to?
Wait, you have to grab it and move it to the screen. Oh, yeah. I know that. I just forgot. Sorry.
Oh.
Musical interlude.
Eddie's here to fix it. No problem.
Thank you, Eddie and Michelle. Okay, so as you can see now, that the Planning and Building tab has Development Process. So, these are projects that are pending review. So, any of the projects that are coming before ZDRB or before the council are up. And if you want to just have a little information, you can just grab that tab. If you want to have a little more, you can click on it and it will take you for a little bit more in-depth information on any of these projects that are loaded into the system and are current. So now, how do I get out of that?
Close the tab.
Close that and we'll take you back.
No, if I wanted to get back into the.
Into where?
Back, back into the website.
There you go, Jacob. Boy, there it is.
There we go. Jacob, you, you can lead me through, Jacob. All right, so now we're going to go into Public Works. And again, all these can be found on the GIS tab and they're very easy to navigate if you're not trying to do a presentation. So if you can, if you notice the, the tabs on, on those, so go to, go to the, go to Capital Projects, Jacob. So Capital Projects will load and you can see that we have the same projects that we have in our CIP. Again, the same types of information as, as was available on the planning side with development. If you want just a little bit of information, that's available. And if you want to in-depth, they can just click on it and we'll take them a little deeper into the project and show them all the details. and show them all the detail they want. And then click back out, Jacob. And then finally, Storyboards. So we have a variety of storytelling pages. And again, those continue to get updated. They're refreshed and we try to keep them current. And then the last one would be the catalog, yep, all of the catalogs. So that's all of the story maps that we have, all of the layers that we have. All of those are available to the public. They're very easy to see and read. And we continue to try to add public layers to those as well and keep those updated as we collect assets. This is the business directory, so the Chamber of Commerce helps keep this current. They give the information. As you can see, it's a pretty slick way to. Pretty slick way for us to help that public-private partnership and help people find their way around town into the different sites, restaurants and businesses that we have here in town. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. That's the Mutt Mitt map.
See that? Three times fast. Councilmember Mueller, question?
So if somebody has it loaded on a smart device, is there anything they have to do to update it as you're updating with new information?
If you have, sorry. If you have the app actually open, when I push an update out, you won't see the updated map until you close it and then open it again. So the instant you open it, you have the most up-to-date maps. But it does load, so therefore if you do have it open and you're playing around with it, you're not going to see a map if I happen to push, you know, a new Mutt Mitt station out there or if something else. You'll still have access to that map. You just won't see anything new while it's actually open.
Okay, great. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Nice teamwork. We worked through our mouse issues, so appreciate it. Team effort. We're going to move on now to our council meeting reports. I have a report from Napa County Flood Control. You can go to Upper Valley Waste Management if there is a report.
I'll turn it over to my alternate.
Well, I guess they knew that I was going to sit in for Councilmember Mueller because they canceled the meeting.
Good report. Napa County League of Governments. I know that several of us attended that meeting down at the American Canyon Boys and Girls Club. Any specific reports out? The topic, the main topic was the Napa County Strategic Plan. And we were all able to hear presentations and interact with some of the priorities in that plan. So we believe that we're part of the overall process with the county. So that was helpful and interesting. Any other reports or announcements from council? Vice Mayor?
I did want to be sure and put in a word for Tuesday evening, October 30th, from 5:30 to 7:30, the Community Center for our initial and inaugural workshop for wildfire and actually disaster preparedness. Councilmember Dorman and I have been meeting throughout the town with different neighborhoods and ascertaining from them what, you know, what needs they think are important and letting them know what we can and can't do. And people are very enthusiastic about this project. So I hope there'll be a big turnout, 5:30 PM at the Community Center on Tuesday, the 30th. So bring your family. Come on.
Thank you. Two other reports, I'll call them announcements, I guess, that I wanted to share on behalf of the whole council. Thanks to everyone, Samantha, and all of your team and all the volunteers that made our Yountville Days Parade and Festival another success. Forty-one years, I believe. And all of the first responders that were our grand marshals for the parade. It was really great to be able to recognize them and have them be a part of the day's activities. Also, thanks to our Planning Department and all of the other staff that participated in the Envision Yountville Open House on, or just this past weekend. We had a very nice turnout. I think it was over 60 people that were there. And there's a lot of activity going back and forth with all of the elements that were kind of given an overview by our consultant and our Planning Department. So that was a good next step workshop, and there's still more public engagement to be had.
Yes, and I'll just point out, by the end of the afternoon, we reached slightly over 100 participants. So there were some additional 30 or so folks that came in during the balance of the afternoon. So also, we'll be posting all of the various feedback, some of which was kind of fun, some interesting to read. But all of that will be part of the record and we'll be going out. And then we will also, the next phase will be an online survey. And we'll be sending that out with information, press release. And then it goes to, in November, we take it on tour to all of our citizen boards and commissions. And then it'll be on, back here at a council meeting on December 4th.
Great. Thank you very much. I believe that takes care of our business for this evening. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to November 6th at 6:00 PM.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
There we go. And is there a second? We have a second. All in favor? Thank you. Good night.